And then in that case, we'll go on to item 4C. This is regarding the short-term residential rentals. And this item was previously agendized for the March 17th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, but that meeting was canceled due to the shelter-in-place order. So tonight, we will review and make a recommendation to City Council at a future public hearing for adoption of the amendment of Chapter 12.80 definitions and Chapter 12.270 of the San Bruno Municipal Code regarding short-term residential rentals. Staff report?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Wu. I am the city's planning and housing manager. And tonight, I have the pleasure of providing you with the Municipal Code amendment regarding regulation and permitting of the short-term residential rental. Tonight's agenda, I'll start with the objective for this item, then provide a background for the ordinance proposed, followed by an overview of how ordinance will work, and conclude my presentation with tonight's action and answer any questions that you may have. The objective for tonight is for Planning Commission to adopt the ordinance amending San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 12.80, parentheses, definitions, and adding Chapter 12.270, parentheses, short-term residential rentals. Next, I'll summarize the background leading up to the work that has been invested into the proposed ordinance structure. In the recent years, cities have experienced growth in the use of residential properties as short-term rentals. These rentals are typically advertised on online hosting platforms such as Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, or any other online platforms. These platforms allow guests to rent rooms or the entire house from hosts on a short-term basis. Most of these rental duration are 30 days or less. This is also a result of the new shared economic model, where an unoccupied or underutilized resource in general demand is made available to rent to optimize utilization. Currently in San Bruno, there are no adopted regulations for the city to use to proactively identify these properties, regulate their uses, or collect permit fees and taxes. Whereas many other local cities such as Pacifica, Redwood City, or South San Francisco have adopted zoning regulations and permitting requirements to regulate these uses and their potential effects. However, establishing, implementing, and enforcing these regulations and collecting the tax revenue requires dedicated city time and resources, which presents several policy issues for the city to consider when determining the appropriate level of city regulatory oversight and control. On July 10th, 2018, the City Council held the first study session and received a summary report that examined short-term rentals in the city. In return, the City Council provided several key directions to staff. They asked staff to research other cities' STR regulations regarding regulatory land use permits, to investigate parking-related concerns, to examine mechanisms for tax collection, to examine allowing STRs only in certain areas, neighborhoods, and also consider establishing a maximum number of short-term rentals citywide. Staff researched these items and provided response in the staff report. This comparison matrix is also included as attachment two in your staff report, which summarizes regulation approaches in nearby cities that have adopted regulations recently. In January 2020 this year, City Council held the second study session to review the attached proposed ordinance and provide a further direction regarding regulation and permitting short-term residential rentals. Specifically, the council provided input that resulted in a few minor modifications to the draft ordinance. These inputs include allowing accessory dwelling units, ADUs, where the primary single-family dwellings is owner-occupied, to be used as a short-term residential rental use subject to an annual limit of 120 days. Staff's original recommendation was 90 days, and while there was no clear consensus on the annual limit, 120 days was suggested, and staff is in agreement that this is the optimal number. Secondly, council provided input to allow the entire unit to be utilized as a short-term residential unit subject to an annual limit of 120 days a year. Again, staff's original recommendation was 180 days. While there was no clear consensus, 120 days was suggested, and staff is in agreement that this is the optimal number. Lastly, council directed staff to amend the definition section in the zoning code to be consistent with the new STR ordinance. Therefore, staff has amended definition in Chapter 12.80 so that the uses listed are consistent for the draft ordinance. As the city currently does not have any adopted comprehensive regulations for short-term residential rentals, there are definitions and zoning regulations for hotels, boarding houses, and rooming houses, but they are not tailored to short-term rentals. For instance, a hotel is any facility that has six or more guest rooms, but they are not allowed in residential districts. Uses such as a boarding house or a rooming house are allowed where lodging is provided for three or more persons for compensation, and they're only allowed in R3 and R4 subject to a use permit. Today, the city has no record of any use permit that was granted for a rooming house or boarding house. Lastly, in R1 zone, houses can be rented out up to two unrelated individuals, or the entire house could be rented out for any duration of the time. The city's municipal code also allows taxation to be imposed for short-term rentals. For instance, all business including short-term rentals are required to obtain a business license for conducting business in the city. However, absent a specific program designed to identify those short-term rental units, the operators are not obligated to obtain a business license. Today, no operators have applied voluntarily. In addition, the city's transient occupancy tax, the TOT tax ordinance, applies to any transient who occupies at any hotel, including short-term rentals. The TOT requires that any transient who stays 30 days or less to pay a 12% tax to the operator, who is required to remit the tax to the city. The inclusion of short-term rental in this ordinance will be a change, is a change, that was approved by the City Council last summer as a Chapter 3 munico update. Short-term rentals, like hotels, are a source of transient in a city who utilize city resources. However, there's no mechanism to identify and collect taxes and none have been collected voluntarily. Since there's no current regulation to permit existing short-term rentals, staff has conducted a survey and found out there are 11 complaints regarding suspected short-term rentals since May 2018, which represents about 1% of the total number of complaints that were registered at the same time. These complaints involve illegal construction inside a unit to partition each bedroom separately so that the renters would not be benefit. This also includes a whole house being rented out to different parties without adequate supervision by property owners, or the whole dwelling units that were operated as a transient lodging. I'll close this section by mentioning that while there were a number of STR short-term rental complaints with the recent COVID-19, it is anticipated the short-term rental uses in city will be dramatically reduced as both travel for business and pleasure will be significantly reduced as well. Next, I'll provide an overview of the proposed short-term residential rental ordinance. The key features of this ordinance include establishing a regulatory permit requirement and process, and this would also include a type of short-term residential rentals, the locations where they're allowed, and the annual duration limit for each type of unit. This will also include a defined objective operational standards and provide clear requirements for owners. And lastly, this would define established taxation and licensing requirement. The first guiding policy consideration for the proposed ordinance is to decide on whether and how to regulate STRs through a land-use-based regulatory zoning ordinance. Staff has prepared a proposed ordinance that strikes a moderate balance between potential neighborhood effects as well as city and property owner financial benefits. The application fees will be set by the City Council in the master fee schedule at a later date. This can also mandate and verify appropriate insurance policies. Next, the guiding policy focuses on the type of STRs where they can be allowed for an annual duration that could be imposed for each of the allowed STR unit. In the chart, it shows that the proposed ordinance differentiates STRs into three categories. The first category are the non-hosted units versus the second category, the hosted stays, and the accessory dwelling ADU units. The non-hosted units are those that, oop, sorry. The non-hosted units are those that are typically involved, the entire house to be rented out, where the owner is not present during the stay. Based on council's direction from this January, an annual limit of 120 days for such stay is imposed for non-hosted residential rentals. The second category includes the hosted stays, where this could include one or two, or up to three bedrooms, or any other portion of the existing house to be rented out with the owner who also occupies on premise. Based on this scenario, there is no limit in terms of how many days short-term rental could be rented out. However, there is a limit of up to three bedrooms for any hosted short-term rentals. Lastly, ADUs can also be used for short-term rentals up to 120 days, and this is per City Council's direction. This provision would allow for optimal utilization of existing house and income creation for property owners while maximizing city's tax revenue. Also, the annual cap will minimize the potential for loss of longer-duration stays, which are the longer housing stock. There are other guiding policy considerations aimed to define objective operational standards and provide clear requirements for owner operators. In return, this will ensure health, safety, and the welfare for both San Bruno residents and visitors to the city of San Bruno. Some of these operational standards include requiring the existing parking spaces to be provided for short-term rental guests. That short-term rental guests will comply with city's noise regulation, and that emergency safety information are clearly posted in the short-term rental premise. And lastly, owner-operator should make sure that there's always a local contact available to answer any questions. In addition to providing land use regulations, guiding policy objectives pertaining to adequately collecting tax revenue and issuing business licenses are required for any operator providing transient occupancy unit. While these are not under the zoning code regulations, I want to mention this to make sure that the Planning Commission is aware the role of the city taxation and city licensing requirement relating to the short-term residential rental use. To conclude tonight's action, staff recommends the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopting the ordinance amendment, including, excuse me, Chapter 12.80 and adding a new Chapter 12.270. Following tonight's action, City Council will have two separate meetings to introduce the ordinance and then adopt the ordinance. We anticipate this may be scheduled during the summer. Additionally, staff will be working on implementing of the short-term rental program such as developing the permit application requirements, forms, checklist, guidelines, informational handout, and other material. Staff will also be dedicating a website where information about the new regulation and permit type, permit application, and other relevant information are available to those who are interested. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pamela. Does the commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I think I went first last time, so I wasn't going to go first, but I'll go ahead.
Get on track.
Would the software providers be required to verify the existence of a permit before allowing a new San Bruno property to be put onto their platforms? Or is this something that we would be monitoring after the fact?
Through the chair, the exact administration of the program has not been vetted out, and we have talked about contacting or contracting a consultant to help the staff to administer the program, but there's no definite answer in that direction yet.
Okay, and actually, that leads right into my second question. I'm really, really hoping that the city will adopt a model similar to what I understand happens in Redwood City, where all of the work for collecting the taxes and administering that whole thing was all pushed on to the software providers who just put that stuff right into their into their systems, and the city just collects checks. So, I mean, obviously, it's not quite that simple, but I don't want to see us lose too much of the revenue that's going to come in here to unnecessary oversight. So I very much recommend that we go to a model where we trust the providers to send, to, you know, to remit, you know, collect the taxes and remit them, and then, you know, obviously, we have periodic audits to make sure that there's compliance.
I'll definitely note that in the meeting summary reporting to City Council.
Thank you. Just as a comment, this has been a very, very long time coming. The city has left quite a lot of money on the table by not doing this earlier, so I'm very glad to see this happening now.
Through the chair, I think the permitting at the moment is suggested to be every six months. I think it should be for a year, similar to the surrounding cities. And I just wonder, the suggested fees for licensing, 750 for a first-time go, it seems very high compared to what other cities are charging. That's just my comments. But I think, definitely think the licensing should be for a year because six months passes by very quickly.
I think it's biennial.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Any other commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff?
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mary. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'll give a chance to read a little bit more here.
I actually had a comment in direct response. That my understanding, and staff can clarify, that I believe that fee was for two years. It was biennial, not semi-annual.
Through the chair, if I may, there was a fee proposed to City Council during a study session. At this time, we're going to go back to City Council for an exact fee and also with the duration. So what we're presenting to the Planning Commission for consideration tonight is the structure of the ordinance. The program itself, who's going to be implementing what, and how much, how often, will be discussed at a later date.
Okay, there definitely were numbers in there, but my reading of it was, anyway. I did have an unrelated question. Just trying to make sure I understand what the day limits that are proposed, like sort of how those would function. So when somebody has an ADU, that's sort of treated as a separate housing unit from their main house. Sort of it's permitted as a separate unit and rents out as a separate unit. And so if we imagine somebody had, say, a three-bedroom house and an ADU, what I'm trying to figure out is would they be able to rent out the three bedrooms of their house for 120 days and then sort of pack themselves into the ADU to be out of the way of their guests, and then rent out the ADU separately for an additional 120 days? Which, I mean, honestly, like, I mean, 240 days out of 360 actually seems pretty reasonable to me. But if that is the case, then I do wonder if, you know, it's like if you have three bedrooms in an ADU, you can get up to 240 days. But if you have a four or five-bedroom house, you can get 120 days. It seems like it might be more reasonable for us to try to account this and just say, like, you know, regardless, for the parcel, you can get 180 or 240 days to make it more consistent between those different arrangements. And I also, regardless, I'm fine with approving this. We can always come back and amend it later, depending, you know, if we find that the way it works is not satisfactory. But it did, when I was reviewing that, it sort of, if I'm reading it right, and the 120-day limit applies separately to two different buildings on the same property, it does seem like maybe we want to rethink that.
All right. If I'm understanding you correctly, this is assuming a property has an ADU already that could be also made available in addition to bedrooms or a whole house being rented out.
Yeah, that's sort of the scenario I'm considering. And I just, I wasn't clear whether those two limits apply separately to the two separate buildings.
We could definitely take that and forward on to the City Council and see if there's any further clarification needed.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I favor just like a longer overall limit. I think 180 or 240 would be fine rather than 120. And so if it does add up to 240 for the two, personally, I'm okay with that. But it does seem peculiar for it to apply differently depending on whether you have a large five-bedroom house or a, you know, three-bedroom house with an ADU in the back. Like, that seems odd.
Through the chair, I believe, based on the study sessions, that the intent of the limit was to keep as much housing stock for traditional owners and renters in the housing pool as possible and to discourage folks from, you know, having a house be only for short-term rentals and removing that home permanently from the pool of housing because of the shortage. That was my understanding of what the annual limit is for. Regarding the length of it, 120 seemed reasonable. I wouldn't be against it being maybe a little longer, but not too much longer.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a question of, do you think if you can't have it rented out a third of the time, that's enough to discourage trying to operate a property for income that way? But anyway, that could be a matter of study. So I just, I did think the question of like, the sort of one large building versus a slightly smaller main building and an outbuilding being treated differently, that seemed like something to revisit. And we already went over the inspection fees, and I strongly agree with Commissioner Hamilton's comments that the program should be self-funding. So as we get to allocating those fees, I just want to make sure that, you know, that time for our inspectors is really, is fully recouped in those inspection fees. And then, I know I wrote down one other question here. Yes, there was a statement in here that short-term rentals can be allowed up to three bedrooms in a single-family residential district for hosted stays. And I wasn't clear whether there was a limit on the number of persons per bedroom. So if people are having minutes, is it, like, we, you know, if it's, you know, if you had an eight-person party that would, oh, right, because it said three bedrooms. Oh, now I can't find the text. There was something about an additional part of the house being rented, but it sounded like maybe it was limiting to an eight-person party with two people for each of the three bedrooms and two in the rest of the house, like on a holdout couch in the living room or something.
There was discussion about how many people could be in each bedroom. However, our current code says that you, each single-family residence can have up to three bedrooms to be rented out. At the same time, we also say that the entire house, or portion of the house, can be rented out to two unrelated individuals who are not family members. I don't believe our code specifically states how many people can be in a bedroom. That may be a building co-related question in terms of occupancy, size of the bedroom, no more than eight people or a person in the same bedroom for exiting or other requirement. But the way the short-term rental ordinance is structured that we want to discourage more than three bedrooms or up to two unrelated individuals in R1 zone to be rented out. And I should emphasize that the difference between short-term rentals and the regular rentals is the 30-day reference. Oftentimes, people go on vacation, you rent it for a weekend or a week, but it doesn't necessarily go on for a whole month. Once you cross the 31-day, it's becoming just a regular rental, monthly rental, as if you will have to sign a monthly lease. So these are more shorter duration.
Right. It's possible I've confused something about the regulation. Because yeah, there's, I know there's the long-term rental regulation where it's if you have owner occupied and also renting, they can rent out to two individuals unrelated in separate bedrooms. But I was on page 37 of the packet, I think.
That could be in the matrix of other cities that has the number of individuals mentioned.
It's, okay, I'm looking at it again. It was on page 37. It is in the matrix. And what I was looking at was the San Bruno proposed column. And what it says for the short-term rental regulation, STRs can be allowed, so, yeah, that it was allowing, and I think, is this just for the hosted stay? You can rent out up to three rooms. And so this would potentially allow for the short-term rental. If you're going to rent out three bedrooms, it can't make sense for that to only be to two unrelated individuals. Otherwise, how are they using the third bedroom?
Right, right. So our proposed ordinance for San Bruno does talk about STRs can be allowed up to three bedrooms, but it really does not have that two-person-per-bedroom, which is listed in Melbrae or Redwood City's ordinance.
So potentially, you could do a party of nine that's coming in to go to a convention nearby, and they can pack in three people per bedroom. Which again, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that. I'm trying to make sure I understand what we're approving.
I think we're not discussing the number of individuals that can be accommodated in a bedroom, but focusing on the number of bedrooms.
Okay, all right. At least I think I understand it now. I don't know if somebody else has questions.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Hamilton and Commissioner Harmon for your very thoughtful comments this evening. They're well done, both of you. Thank you. And Commissioner Hamilton's remarks about pushing the efforts off onto the software providers, I think that's brilliant. Why should we do work that someone else can do by pushing? But, I mean, we're using Zoom and it's working fine. Why wouldn't we want to automate this portion of our project? So thank you, gentlemen, for those comments.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Some of them have already been asked. Has there been any discussion with Airbnb to see how properties are used and what potential issues they have? And just to have, they're the users, basically, or the users, the people renting are the users. But they know the pros and cons of this whole thing, and I'm wondering if there has been any opportunity for that end of it.
Sure, through the chair. Staff has not had any formal conversation with Airbnb. However, we've had a conversation with these consultants or contractors that Commissioner Hamilton's were talking about, who have extensive knowledge on administering permitting programs, compliance modules, and whatnot. What Airbnb does is that they provide an advertising platform for those who are interested. Their perspective is slightly different than the city trying to provide a regulatory control and oversight.
Sure, I understand that. Okay, well, thank you for that feedback. Let's see, and I thought I heard you say that there's already been, you did some comparisons to Melbrae. And I thought I heard you say that there's already been, you could, did some comparisons to Melbrae and I think you said Redwood City, so it sounds like like there's been a lot of homework behind the scenes on this before it came to this point, obviously. Um, and what about, uh, let me look here. On page three of eight, there was in the very first uh bullet. Um, and when you talked about, there was, it was a hundred twenty days and then it was changed to a hundred eighty days. Uh, was that just to align, to align numbers or was there some math, math um reasons to change those numbers?
Sure, through the chair again. Uh, so it's actually the other way around. Staff has originally proposed a hundred eighty day.
Right.
Um, council provided input to a lot, I, I don't know if there's any math behind it, but to align um the hundred twenty days because originally the ADUs were proposed with a limit of ninety days. So the limit for ADUs went up and then others went down.
Sure, sure. I can say that. The only reason I raise uh even the question is sometimes we do things to make things align and to make them easier. But there's sometimes mathematical reasons behind it that doesn't always truly make sense and uh I've come into experience that in different, you try to align something, but it's uh, someone not working it really won't know. The other thing on the next one down on um, on, we're looking at hotels, boarding houses, rooming houses. You know, there are a lot of scenarios that could be done and uh, you, you can never write everything down. But there was other language like granny units and in-law, in-law units and student units and maid quarters. There was a number of years back, I can't tell you how many years back, I don't know, maybe it's been fifteen years, I don't really know, on London Court. Uh, there was, it came before the commission and it was a project, I believe it was twelve thousand square feet. And that had a maid's quarters uh in there. And so some of these have already been in place. Well, I don't know how many maid's quarters we have in San Bruno, but this particular one did. And we looked at this really thorough, long before any of this was ever a consideration. So I don't know if there are other places in San Bruno that might have, uh, I mean, we're calling ADUs now, we're calling them other things, but I, I think that there has to be some level of glossary for all this stuff, because people say, well, I don't have an ADU. I have a granny unit or I have an in-law or I have, you know, I have a, uh, uh, who knows what, but it I think a glossary, because there's so much here to really think about, uh, the scenarios as, uh, as we've discussed already. And there's also, which is a bit different, but there's board and care. Board and care can be from anywhere from six, six to fourteen. And there's also family daycare. Family daycare, because I've been in the business, was in the business for forty-five years, they stay overnight sometimes. And so, okay, so what does that mean? They're licensed by the Department of Social Service, so it's very different, but they are licensed. They have to get a license through us. So there are those components and uh, so um, you know, where do they fall into that? Um, let's see. Uh, look at my questions. So anyway, those are my comments on that area. And then I was looking at the complaints, uh, there were eleven complaints, but I heard you say tonight, they were from twenty eighteen. So there truly isn't too many complaints in two years, when you think about it. I mean, if you live next door, it probably is a horrible thing. But eleven complaints in two years isn't um, isn't horrendous. Um, and also, I find it interesting, um, all of this is really just interesting information, right? And there's so, if, for myself, I'm the kind of person who wants to get in there, dig in and, and start work in the process and looking at the pros and cons and the, all the scenarios and how it weighs out and what I do, what I feel is, would be worse is to put, put so much control into it that it just makes it just not manageable well. And um, but then there's also, um, when it talks about in the last paragraph, kind of in the middle, it talks about, let me see if I can read this. The entire house rented um out to different parties without, out to different parties. Now, without adequate supervision from the property owners. So you're talking about different parties, meaning different people unknown to each other, is how I interpret that. Uh, which is not unusual in a college town. You know, in a, in a place where in today's market, because housing is so difficult, it's not unusual for it to happen almost anywhere anymore. And so, and how, and the monetary, you know, all that, yes. Uh, let's see. I'm looking at now on page five of eight. You've answered the question, because I had a notation here about the workload to staff and the bandwidth to accommodate all of that, but applications, but you've addressed that issue. Um, oh, and on the next one under where it talked about the biannual. Some people interpret that as twice a year, biannual means every other year, but it uh semi, semi-monthly is twice, twice a month or semi-annually is twice a year. But maybe just in parents to look, put in, in that parents for clarification, because some people look at it as bi, you know, biannually. It could be twice, bi, right? It could be twice. And could be a language, could be lots of different things. So I would recommend for the clarification purpose. I do agree that looking at the rates at seven fifty, five fifty, I, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be uh going back to take a look at some of those areas. Uh, for, is it, is it aligned well with cost and all? I mean, it's important that the city gets revenue and as uh, my commissioner, uh, my colleague indicated, it uh, been sitting on this for a long time, but the best time to do is now and and it's good to move forward, but it's also important that, that it's done without um, being onerous to the, the applicants. Um, okay, and I think down here, whole house. Um, whole house rentals, I have a question here, but I don't know what that means. Uh, such as, oh, uh, where it says establish clear requirements for owners. I'm not sure that I quite understand. The ordinance would set requirements for owners such as owner occupancy validation through the permit process and process and posting of local contact information for guests and the local, blah, 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 blah. You know, I got really worried and whatever and I just couldn't get to the point of thinking, okay, what is the actual goal here? And just having language that's clear. And, and sometimes when you send it out to um agencies, they have their, they have their own, all of their own verbiage and, you know, layman's terms are really important, so I really want to encourage that. Um, and uh, something here that I under. Oh, and then on page seven of eight, um, the, the third bullet. When it talks about enter into a voluntary collection agreement, BTA with Airbnb, does Airbnb currently offer this service?
Um, I am not the best person to answer. I'll do my best to explain. Airbnb does offer an agreement for a city to enter with them, so that Airbnb will remit some of the online taxes that they have been collected. However, Airbnb opts out of um providing the detailed information of how those fees are collected or these taxation's were collected. Currently, the city of San Bruno does not have an, a, a contract or an agreement with Airbnb to take these money.
Right, right, premature. Okay. Alright, and then the last paragraph, should the city council choose to reduce the maximum number of days per year of hosted and or non-hosted units, accessory dwelling units and or zoning. But you ha, when you read some of these pieces, you have to read them and reread them. If there is going to be, I'm sure there would be much easier clarification once it gets down to uh the implementation of an applicant. It'll be much clearer. And there's nothing better than tables and putting sometimes, you know, the number of bodies or heads or symbols that indicate what it is, you know, tables make all the difference in the world. Um, okay, I think that's what I've, I've gotten so far. Alright, thank you.
Sure. Through the chair, if I can um just provide some clarification to Commissioner Johnson's uh question. Um, so in the world of short-term rentals, again, we're talking about anyone who is a transient occupant staying at a location for less than thirty days. So this will take out anyone who is a college student who's um staying in a facility permanently for more than a month.
Okay, so, though, if a per, but it indicates maximum, maximum days per year is a hundred and twenty.
That's um adding it up. So if I stay two weekends, uh, two days this weekend, two more days next weekend, collectively this entire year, this unit can only be rented out up to a hundred twenty days, but not right, so, but not a hundred twenty days consecutively.
So in other words, they would limit a person who has an Airbnb to a hundred and twenty days a year?
Correct. However, each duration will have to be less than thirty days.
So you can potentially have, I'm sorry, then.
That's okay.
Alright, so you can potentially have a person staying there twenty-nine days and then a new person twenty-nine throughout the whole year.
Up to a hundred twenty days.
Up, up to a hundred twenty days?
That's correct.
Alright, so you cannot utilize the whole year. So if you think that you're going to utilize your unit for, for an entire year, that you, that you actually have a unit that um, basically it's a hundred twenty days out of the year.
Correct.
Let's say I put an ADU in the back of my hill on Sweeney Ridge. And uh, so the max that I would get is a hundred twenty days.
Right, a hundred twenty days, correct. So for instance, you have an ADU in the backyard, um, you have a renter who wants to stay permanently. So she, she, he or she will have a monthly lease with you.
Right, that's different.
Right, that's different. However, if you are not able to secure a renter, somebody wants to rent this weekend plus next weekend plus the weekend after, just make sure that each duration is less than thirty days and collectively these do, these days added up is no more than a hundred twenty days.
That's interesting.
So that's the first clarification. Um, secondly, you mentioned there are the care facility. So there's the long-term care, there's the childcare possibly, they're actually in a different land use category, they're the care facility. So there are actually three different categories. And in the world of short-term residential rentals, for instance, li, uh, using you as an example, you could rent out a room in your house while you still live in your house. That's what we call the hosted states, because you are also hosting your guest. If you somehow think that you will be traveling and your house will be vacant most of the time, you could put your house on the market where the entire house is available for rent less than thirty days. Or you are not on the same site, which is a non-hosted state. Or the third scenario is, is the ADU in the backyard, that could also be rented out while you are still occupied in the main dwelling unit.
And if you are not to be in that dwelling unit, then you could not let that, you can't.
Correct. If you do not live in that unit, you cannot rent out your ADU for a short-term rental purpose.
Like, for instance, we go to Australia for long periods of time. So, now, it's never been more than six weeks. However, that is, you know, uh, let's say we wanted to stay there three months. So would that be considered us being in, I mean, it's still our home.
Then if, so if you have your house and ADU and you're not, you're in Australia, you want to rent out your main house, that's fine. That's a non-host, uh, that's a non-hosted state. But you just have to make sure your, your visitors don't stay more than thirty days at a time. You cannot rent out your main house and ADU at the same time.
Interesting.
That's, that's the main difference. Um, and then the biannual um limit is really every other day. But I do agree that there will be more clarification.
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of different people with different interpretations and languages and, and uh, so in all, in all fairness, the clearer the better.
And the other thing I do want to provide clarification is that there is no commercial operation um allowed in short-term rental. I.e. um, somebody who wants to rent a nice home to host a wedding, do a corporate retreat, um, some sort of a party. Now, this is only for um overnight accommodation, um, sleeping arrangement, those type.
Okay, so I do know that there are several, like in our, uh, in a, in a couple of uh organizations in San Bruno. They, they look for locations to have someone come in while they're working on a project. And it might be a six-months project and they're staying there for six months. So, so that would be into a lease agreement, basically. Okay, I'm trying to wrap my brain around all the components. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any other questions for staff from the commission? Okay. Alright, so I don't think that we have um opened a public hearing for this yet. So if we have no more commission questions for staff, we'll move uh to open the, a public hearing. Uh, Melissa, do we have uh any members of the public who would like to raise their hands and make comment?
I see no hands raised, no.
Okay, so in that case, uh, I could entertain a motion to close public comment, uh, public hearing.
Yes.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Okay, roll call please.
Chair Lethen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, so uh, public hearing is closed. And uh, we'll bring it back to the commission. Does, do any of the commissioners? I know we are, already did a lot of speaking about it, but do commissioners have any um other comments or uh discussion?
I, I just, I have a quick question, which was I um, I know I had suggested that the council consider adjusting the day regulation to focus on the parcel rather than the dwelling unit. And I, I believe there was another recommendation for comment, I've forgotten what it is, but I, I wasn't clear whether that just sort of automatically gets forwarded or whether we want to sort of include those recommendations as part of our resolution.
Um, typically, those will be included as a meeting summaries. So I do know that there is a um, comment made by Commissioner Harmon about um how long each unit could be rented out, whether or not it's a combination of a hundred twenty plus a hundred twenty or there should be a cap on per property. I also have a note that um the mentioned, the seven hundred fifty dollars and five hundred dollar um permit fee and a re, uh, annual uh renewal fee could be too high, so I'll be also noting that to the, um, to city council in the meeting summary. Um, the resolution that you will be uh taking action tonight is basically forwarding your recommendation, should you will, to city council in adopting the ordinance. But your comments will definitely be included in the staff report as part of the planning commission hearing uh summary.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Another question for Pamela. Um, are the days, those limit, those a hundred and twenty days, all of the daytimes, are they in alignment with other cities, basically?
Um, the cities that we have surveyed um do vary quite a bit. If you look at the matrix, um, certain cities actually have no limit on how many days that can be rented out. But some cities, with that said, don't allow ADUs to be rented out. So it's, it's kind of, it's hard to make a, a fair comparison. Sometimes you'll be comparing apples and oranges. But um, hundred days, about ninety days, a hundred twenty days is about the average, where cities do want to put a, some sort of annual limit.
And what is the reason for that?
So that it's not taking the housing stock completely from the market. So say that if you reserved a unit
That's right, but.
Made available three hundred sixty-five days, then this is not available for a regular person who wants to permanently stay in that, in that unit. And, and yet again, there is another um statement that staff made, this is really to help the resident to optimize the utilization of existing housing stock. So like you sometimes who travel on a vacation um to somewhere else for a duration of time, longer duration, or your house sitting there vacant, you could optimize a little bit of income by allowing people to stay in your, uh, in your property.
Okay, thank you for that.
Uh, just one other comment. Uh, I'd like to recommend to the council that they make the permitting for a year, not six months. Okay?
Okay, alright, I'll note that.
Okay, any other commissioners have any other comments? Okay, um, I just, I, for myself, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for all the thought that all the commissioners have, have given this. Uh, it's really detailed and really, um, it's really important, I think, to find a balance between um maintaining the stock of longer-term rentals for folks who want to live in this area um, with the shortage that we have, but then also respecting property owners um, right to a certain degree to leverage their properties to bring them some income, because that's not easy here either. So um, I really do appreciate the thought that's given to this. Um, I also do support pursuing the taxation through the listing sites, Airbnb, whoever. I really don't want to further, I don't encourage further burdening staff with collecting this on top of the other duties that they are performing to help us in the city. And I'd never heard of what Commissioner Hamilton had mentioned, which is going, putting the burden on the sites themselves. I'd heard of third-party businesses that will track folks down and collect and manage all of that. But if there is a way and you could dig into whatever magic Redwood City's doing, I think that would be really beneficial. And, oh, my last question for staff was, I keep seeing a three-bedroom limit, and I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me because I don't. But was there a limit to renting? I don't know how to use the screen to do two things at once, I just don't. Can folks rent out a whole house that is more than three bedrooms?
Yes, yes. So you can. So the three-bedroom is that if you are also still living at your house, and say that you have an eight-bedroom house, you're occupying one and you want to rent out seven. So the limit will be three. However, if you do have the eight-bedroom house and you're like Commissioner Johnson, who travels through Australia from time to time, you could put the entire house on the market for a short-term rental use.
Okay, okay, that seems like good flexibility. I was just confused by the three-bedroom mention, so.
Through the chair, excuse me for interrupting. So, I don't want to leave that question. So if I can put the whole house, not that I'm going to, but if you can put the whole house on the market, can it be, if you have eight bedrooms, can it be to eight individual people?
No, this will be one. That will be one.
That's what I thought.
Not one individual, but one party.
One party.
One family or one group of friends, one online transaction, if you will.
Oh, well, then, you can, that's a workaround, that's for sure. It's one transaction and someone says, "Okay, I'll be the one." You know, we had that issue in Across the Bay, right? One person rented it and then they had a variety of people staying there, then they had that party and then they had that death and on and on. So that's a huge workaround.
Right, right.
Can't control everything, I guess.
Well, through the chair, there's absolutely nothing stopping that scenario from happening in San Bruno tomorrow.
That's right.
Except that we wouldn't get anything for it.
Yeah, I actually, I guess, I mean, as an addition, I do find it a little peculiar that we would place stricter limits on the hosted stay than on the unhosted. I mean, it's like you have the eight-bedroom house, having the property owner on the premises seems like it acts as a little bit of a break on some of the, you know, potentially wilder scenarios. So I do wonder if it's even worth retaining that three-bedroom limit, you know, if the, right, if the unhosted stay is unlimited. I mean, again, I'm fine, I'm fine with forwarding it and considering amendments later, anyway.
Because people will bunk however they want. It's like a hotel. I mean, hundreds of conferences where there are teachers, and teachers really want, it's a two queen beds and there's four to a room. And so...
That's long-term houses. I mean, to be clear, I've used Airbnb a fair bit. I mean, I've gone places, you know, a group of friends and I, you know, went to Portland and rented a whole house and the family that owned it basically moved into their ADU for the weekend and like 16 of us were in a, you know, seven-bedroom house or something and it's, it's fine for a weekend for a convention. And for the most part, people are not rowdy or whatever, it's fine. But I just, as an observation on the content of the ordinance, I think, you know, if you're going to say that the unhosted stay, you could rent out the whole house, then like, you know, saying that if it's a hosted stay, you can only rent out three bedrooms instead of four or five, seems actually kind of unreasonable.
I would agree.
To piggyback on to Commissioner Harmon's comment, I also don't see a benefit to penalizing a hosted stay in that sense. But would those three bedrooms also, would those be unrelated parties? Or would that be a single party renting those bedrooms?
That would be three unrelated parties. So for instance, you have three extra bedroom. Me, somebody else, and somebody else could be occupying each of the bedroom. We're all three unrelated individuals. In terms of punishing the hosted or non-hosted stay, I guess I wouldn't necessarily categorize in that sense. When we, when staff brought this item to council for consideration in January for study session, we actually conducted, conducted a, at the glance, how many short-term rentals are available in San Bruno. And be mindful, this is pre-COVID-19, so the scenarios and landscape is quite different today, which is the reason I decided not to show that slide to you. At a time, so there's a variety of different accommodations provided in city San Bruno. You'll see that most of the hosted rooms or hosted stays are alone are downtown transit corridor where they're close to Bart and Caltrans. So people are coming in, staying for nine, they are only looking for a bedroom. And these are in the smaller setting, where there are large mansions and larger states with amenities to offer up in the hills, or other families or a family gathering or reunion are looking for a setting like that. So I think they're attracting different audience, so I wouldn't necessarily putting the two in a fair comparison. But I do see that, to answer Chair Lethen's question, is that if you have a house, and most houses in San Bruno unfortunately do not have eight bedrooms, they usually are in about three-bedroom range. So if you're occupying in one or two, you still have one or other that's available for rent, or your entire house of a three-bedroom or four can be rented out. So the scenario that I threw out earlier with eight-bedroom is more of a anomaly.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, if we don't have any more comments from the commission, I guess that we can entertain an action.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, oh, it was on my screen, there it goes. I would like to propose that we adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance, amending chapter 12.80 and adding chapter 12.270.
I'd second that.
Okay, great, roll call, please.
Chair Lethen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
All right, wonderful, thank you, that passes. That is the end of our hearing items.